Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting. It is Tuesday, September 18, 2018. It is 9:00 a.m. Please join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cuff.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Lyon.
Here.
Councilmember Shipley is absent.
Thank you. We'll now open up to public participation. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on items that are not on the agenda? You have up to three minutes. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin. Seeing none, I'll close public comments. Move to Agenda Item Number One, which City Council minutes September 4, 2018. Special Workshop Budget, September 4, 2018. Business Meeting, September 5, 2018. Special Business Budget, September 11, 2018. Workshop. I'll entertain a motion.
Move and approve of the minutes. Second.
Moved in second at all. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Two is a proclamation, Raise the Pink Flag with the Pink 5K Month. Councilmember Lyons, I gave that to you. If you can go down and present. Thank you. And I'd ask everyone receiving to please come up to the podium.
Whereas, breast cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in women, with 266,120 new cases of invasive cancer and 63,960 new cancers expected in women this year, ranking it second among all cancer deaths. Forty thousand nine hundred and twenty anticipated deaths in 2018, and accounting for nearly one in eight cancers diagnosed in U.S. women. And whereas, about 2,550 new cases of breast cancer will be diagnosed in men this year, with 480 anticipated deaths. And whereas, only one in eight women diagnosed with breast cancer have a family history, and 85 percent have no family history, with an increase in incident rates since 1990, being predominantly in women 50 years or older. And whereas, early detection with timely screening mammograms has helped to boost the breast cancer survivor rate to more than 2.6 million in the United States, also resulting in a 33 percent decline in mortalities since 2000, with women under 50 seeing an even larger decrease due to early screening and detection. And whereas, Florida Hospital's Pink Army 5K, with the support of the City of Palm Coast and our community, has distributed over $140,000, helped over 300 patients, and performed hundreds of procedures in direct support of Flagler County men and women dealing with breast cancer. And whereas, the City of Palm Coast is joining the many activities of Florida Hospital Flagler's Pink Army 5K to fight breast cancer by kicking off this year's Pink Army 5K efforts at Food Truck Tuesday on September 18, and by holding the Pink Army 5K Run Walk on October 14, events that will directly benefit the community with proceeds going to expand education and provide mammograms for many more qualified women. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Palm Coast Mayor and City Council hereby proclaim October 2018 as Raise the Pink Flag with the Pink 5K Month, in support of breast cancer awareness and encourage all women to pursue early breast cancer screening and other possible diagnostic services to avoid becoming one of this nation's mortalities. Signed, the 18th of September, 2018.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Kathy Gover. I'm the Chief Nursing Officer at Florida Hospital Flagler. I want to thank the city for this proclamation. The one thing we know is that early screening and detection are the key to the cure. The other thing we know is that engaging people in their own health is really how we become a healthier society and help people live longer lives, longer, healthier lives. One of the things I know about the Pink Army is we're promoting a campaign, The Couch to the 5K, and I think that's an awesome thing because you really get people engaged in their own health and really working on having a better life and living a better life. So, thank you for this proclamation. It's an important initiative.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I guess I'm next. Hi, I'm Tony Papandrea, and I am Chairman of the Florida Hospital Flagler Foundation. And on behalf of the hospital and the foundation, thank you once again for our partnership and our friendship. Soon everything is going to turn pink in October. And gosh, I can't believe another year has gone by. How many people were saved? We'll never know how many people were not saved, but we have early detection, as Kathy said, is the key. Mammograms, get your screening mammograms. We have two technicians back here, Jose and Lisa, who treat our women and men as they come through. If you don't know, we have a magnificent women's center at our hospital, a magnificent cancer center that takes our patients from, gosh, I feel something, to, gosh, I'm cured. And that's where we need to be. The foundation can help. If you cannot afford a mammogram, let us know. We can help. So, come join us, October 14, for our Pink Army 5K Run Walk, Pet Walk, and Kids Run. We have a really good time, and we appreciate you coming. So again, thank you, City of Palm Coast.
Thank you. Week.
Picture, picture, picture.
Vice Mayor Cuff will be presenting. All right, we need some people to crowd behind the flag. I'd ask anyone receiving to please come up to the podium. Okay, I'm going to take a few, so you guys just keep smiling.
Whereas, the Constitution of the United States of America is the guardian of our liberties and embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, not by people. And whereas, September 17, 2018 marks the 231st anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Continental Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate this grand occasion. And whereas, Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through the 23rd, 2018, as Constitution Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Palm Coast does hereby proclaim September 17 through the 23rd, 2018, as Constitution Week in the City of Palm Coast, and we urge all citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us by this guardian of our liberties, signed this 18th day of September, 2018. Do we have anyone receiving? Well... Oh, okay.
Did you do this? Did you do this, Bill? Okay.
Remind everyone that there are some important amendments that are being proposed to the voters this November, and I would encourage everyone to become as prepared as possible on the contents of those amendments, and to vote.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Four is an ordinance. Mr. Raishman.
Mayor, this is the second reading of a quasi-judicial matter. The title of the ordinance is, "The Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast Order Providing for an Amendment to Ordinance Number 20332, Section 7.0 Design Guidelines, Providing for Conflicts, Providing for Legislative Findings and Intent." Repeals all conflicting ordinances, provides for severability, and provides for an effective date. As indicated, Mayor, Council, this is a quasi-judicial matter, so if there have been any ex-party communications since the first reading of this ordinance, then those should be disclosed at this time.
Any council member have any disclosure at this time? I have none. Lyndon?
Mayor, City Council, this is the second reading, and this is the ordinance that staff has been working with a developer here in the downtown area to encourage multifamily. And what this ordinance does is basically allows for carports versus garages for those apartment complexes, not just apartment complexes, they could be condos. They do have to have the same architectural design features as the building. We feel it's very appropriate, and we believe that this ordinance is ready for final action. We've received no additional comments from the first reading.
Council, any questions or comments? Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Four? Please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council. Entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Moved in second at all. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Five is an ordinance. Mr. Raishman.
Mayor, Council, another quasi-judicial matter, second reading. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast Order Providing for the Amendment of the Official Zoning Map as established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. This ordinance amends the official zoning map for approximately 6.3 acres, more or less, which is a subject tract, generally located east of Old Kings Road, north, and north of Oak Trails Boulevard, as described in the attached Exhibit A to the ordinance. It's rezoning from Commercial 1, or COM 1, and Estate, or EST 1, to multifamily zoning 2, FR 2, zoning district. This ordinance provides for conflicts, provides for severability, for non-codification, and for an effective date. Again, if there have been any ex-party communications since the first reading, then those should be disclosed at this time, Mayor.
Council, any disclosure at this time?
None.
Done.
Mayor, City Council, this is the second reading, but this is rezoning that received a great deal of attention from the neighbors. We received numerous comments, so I've asked Ida to do the presentation, make sure that there's full disclosure, and the public has opportunity to hear what is being proposed here. So, Ida, if you'll take it from here.
Good morning.
Morning.
This is Application 3680, a proposed rezoning request, second reading. The applicant is the Richmond Group. The proposed request is age-restricted, 55-plus. It's a proposal to rezone from Commercial 1 and Estate 1 to Multifamily 2. The applicant is interested in the site because of its locational attributes, fairly close to the interchange of IH95, and with direct access to Old Kings Road North, and it's nearby to a mix of uses. Also very important to point out is the proposed site is near single-family residential to the north and to the south, to the east and to the south, is the Woodlands Neighborhood Association and Residence. Just some additional comments on the location. The proposed location is south of Utility Drive. Again, it has direct access to Old Kings Road North, which is a minor arterial, and as stated, there is single-family residential to the east and south. In terms of the future land use designation, the designation is mixed use on our future land use map. The mixed use category does allow multifamily 2, and Old Kings Road North is known as a mixed-use corridor, referred to as a mixed-use corridor in terms of our planning documents. In terms of the existing zoning, the site is Commercial 1, Neighborhood Commercial. The surveyed boundary of the application does include a small portion of Estate 1 zoning. We think that's probably inadvertent. Nonetheless, it does include two zoning districts. Also, to the north of the site is public semi-public zoning. That's the city's utility office. Again, there's Estate 1 zoning, which is a larger lot residential zoning district to the east of the site, and single-family residential zoning east and south of the site. In terms of the proposed zoning request, it includes designating the entire parcel as multifamily 2. That is what the map would be changed to if this was approved. In terms of some key site development standards, the Commercial 1 district has a minimum of 20,000 square feet. The impervious surface ratios are the same, they would be 70 percent with either option. The maximum building height for Commercial 1 is 50 feet, with multifamily 2 at 60 feet. And of course, multifamily 2 has the density, our multifamily 2 designation allows up to 12 units per acre. The technical site plan would determine the actual built-out density. There was a neighborhood information meeting on this request. It was held July 9 at the Community Center. Seventy-five people did attend. They expressed multiple concerns. That correspondence and documentation is in your Agenda backup material. Staff is supporting the request. From a land use perspective, we find that the proposed development does maintain an Estate 1 and Green Belt buffer, that Old Kings Road North is a mixed-use corridor and a minor arterial appropriate for the zoning, and that the comprehensive plan does promote and support diverse housing choices. The application will require additional subdivision and technical site plan review. The project is an infill, the proposed development is an infill project, so services and facilities are nearby. And mixed use on the future land use map does encourage and promote a higher intensity development and more diverse uses. Finally, any development on the property will have to comply with the city's land development code, comprehensive plan, and all other applicable permit and agency requirements. Planning staff and the Planning Land Development Regulation Board recommend that the City Council approve the rezoning of 6.32 acres from Commercial 1 and Estate 1 to Multifamily 2, as proposed in Application 3680. However, we do want to make it very clear for the record that the applicant has been notified, as part of this application process, that the city will not permit any use of its drainage easement on-site to jeopardize the funding, permit status, or timing of the Old Kings Road widening projects Phases 1 and 2. That concludes my comments at this point. Thank you.
Council, any questions or comments?
I'm done.
Open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Five? Please do so at this time.
And I just wanted to give my opinion about the proposed development on Oak Trails. I'm sure that you have heard of this before during the last couple of meetings, that about the, there's actually four concerns of mine. I'm not really sure that the property value on my...
Can someone put the clock on, please?
I'm sorry, what, Mayor?
I got the timer, trying to get the timer up.
And then do you also mind leaning into the microphone a little bit more?
I was hoping the timer wasn't going to go up because I don't have to say. So anyway, I was hoping that the, I'm not really too sure that my property values won't go down. There has been some study that the, there has been study that with affordable housing in the past, that people's perceptions are that there's crime and drugs and everything within the area when there is affordable housing. So if I personally were going to be selling my house, and somebody, you know, there's a potential for a sale, I'm afraid that somebody just might drive by that area and not even look just do because of the affordable housing. So my concern about me putting in, you know, putting in some additionals into my home, and what type of return I'm going to be getting on that. Also, my concern is obviously, we've been having a ton of brownouts down there in St. Augustine, St. Augustine, down there by our house. We had six on Saturday, two on Sunday, and one yesterday. So I'm concerned about that being also putting a little bit of additional stress on my area. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. And where else was I going to go? And the drainage concerns, obviously, is something to be concerned about, having that affected with the additional, with the additional housing that's coming up. And from a personal note, I have left North Carolina, Charlotte, North Carolina. My husband and I were victims of crime in two areas that had affordable housing, so this is a personal thing for me as well. And what else did I want to say? Concerned because there was a panther spotted in the neighborhood. Is that me? Oh, a panther spotted in the neighborhood as well, so I'm concerned about the concerns about the animals that are there to keep them safe, and they are, as you know, they're an endangered species in the area. So with the 174 additional people that might be coming onboard as far as living in the area, you have, everybody knows that you have the Palm Coast Parkway here. I think everybody forgets there's an additional three hotels on the right-hand side, too, that would need to be evacuated in case of an emergency, and those are extended stay hotels as well. So you have three additional hotels, including the Woodhaven, the Woodlands, CBS, you got all that congestion in that one area. So I mean, as far as safety is concerned, I mean, how are you going to evacuate because we are in the impact zone, getting, you know, helping those people get to safety. And I also want to state that I'm surprised that the Richmond Group is actually particularly picking on that area. I feel like there's a pot of gold or something underneath there because I'm not really too sure why that area would be so beneficial to them, considering Town Center here does have the accessibility, and it's already zoned for that type of housing. The, I know they were saying it's close to 95. I don't know how much closer you can get to 95 from this area. You have shopping, you have a movie theater, you have, you have, you're worried about the hospital, you've got hospital right down here, all the doctor's offices are here, there's even beautiful walking trails. You're going to put a development like that right up at the front of Palm Coast Parkway? It's nothing but congestion. And to be honest with you, if I had a choice to move into a housing development, I would choose this area because it's nice, it's spread out, and it's not as congested. So I'm not really sure what the reason is for that area.
Thank you for comments.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. The one thing I've noticed about all this rezoning and projects, that the city never gives a plan for how they're going to handle the traffic, what that these, this rezoning and projects are going to generate. And as we saw on Florida Park Drive, when you react to the traffic, somewhere it's going to go, and sometimes it's the neighborhoods that are suffering from it. So I would ask that the city, prior to proven projects, also iterate how they plan to handle traffic that it might generate. Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker.
Good morning, Council, City Manager, everybody else. I think I just wanted to agree with the young lady that just came here and said that you should move it, should not approve it, move it to Town Center. Try to convince them. I know it's law says you're not supposed to, you're not allowed to, but I definitely don't see until Old Kings Road is widened, and the intersection of Palm Coast and Old Kings are fixed, to accommodate all the widening and everything else, and see what you're going to get. You shouldn't put any more houses or large condominium type 55-plus or anything like that in that location, because you're adding traffic. Right now, when the lights change in the morning and the afternoon, you're almost to Utility Drive with the backup of the traffic now. And just now, that's where it goes into, from one lane into multiple lanes. This is not a good idea. This should be tabled and placed in another area because you do have people that don't want it there to start with, which are the people all around, as mentioned, the residential. Your traffic increase is going to be horrendous, even though it's only, it's 55-plus, but everybody's going to have one or two cars, not going to be like they say, everybody's going to use the bus. This is not a good idea. We have other places where we're already zoned for this way, so don't zone it. They have to go somewhere else. Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker.
Close public comments. I certainly appreciate you attending and being here today. I could speak to the fact that we have equally have asked and inquired several times about multifamily housing and its association with crime statistics. We have asked our law enforcement professionals within the Sheriff's Office to identify those questions that oftentimes come out of, from a discussion like this, and there is zero correlation between crime and multifamily housing. And that's important to denote because we have a lot of multifamily housing that's currently in existence in our single-family neighborhoods due to the fact that we don't have a lot of multifamily housing in our city. As far as traffic, we do traffic engineer studies, we're required to by law. We can't pass developments without doing those studies, so they are directly tied to the approval process when we get further down the road. And drainage, I know we've addressed last time, that this will have to be looked at and addressed certainly, and will not compromise the Old Kings Road expansion effort or initiative, as noted by our staff. You know, we're encouraged, and we're hopefully going to see some additional growth happen in Town Center by the strategic approaches that this council has taken, and I think you're going to see a lot of movement in that area in the next few years. So I think for those comments, any other council discussion or questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Moved in second at all. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Six is an ordinance. Mr. Raishman.
Mayor, Council, this is our...
should move it, should not approve it, move it to town center. Try to convince them. I know it's law says you're not supposed to, you're not allowed to, but I definitely don't see until Old Kings Road is widened and the intersection of Palm Coast and Old Kings are fixed to accommodate all the widening and everything else and see what you're going to get, you shouldn't put any more houses or large condominium type 55-plus or anything like that in that location because you're adding traffic. Right now, when the lights change in the morning and the afternoon, you're almost to utility drive with the back of the traffic now. And just now, that's where it goes into from one lane into multiple lanes. This is not a good idea. This should be tabled and placed in another area because you do have people that don't want it there to start with, which are the people all around, as mentioned, the residential. Your traffic increase is going to be horrendous, even though it's only, it's 55-plus, but everybody's going to have one or two cars, not going to be like they say, everybody's going to use the bus. This is not a good idea. We have other places where we're already zoned through this way, so don't zone it. They have to go somewhere else. Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker.
Close public comments. I certainly appreciate you attending and being here today. I could speak to the fact that we have equally have asked and inquired several times about multifamily housing and its association with crime statistics. We have asked our law enforcement professionals within the sheriff's office to identify those questions that oftentimes come out of, from a discussion like this. And there is zero correlation between crime and multifamily housing. And that's important to denote because we have a lot of multifamily housing that's currently in existence in our single-family neighborhoods due to the fact that we don't have a lot of multifamily housing in our city. As far as traffic, we do traffic engineer studies, we're required to by law, we can't pass developments without doing those studies. So they are directly tied to the approval process when we get further down the road. And drainage, I know we've addressed last time that this will have to be looked at and addressed certainly and will not compromise the Old Kings Road expansion effort or initiative as noted by our staff. You know, we're encouraged and we're hopefully going to see some additional growth happen in town center by the strategic approaches that this council has taken. And I think you're going to see a lot of movement in that area in the next few years. So I think for those comments, any other council discussion or questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Move approval, second.
Moved in second at all. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number six is an ordinance, Mr. Reichman.
Mayor, council, this is our third second reading. This also is quasi-judicial. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. This ordinance amends the official zoning map for 116.41 acres, more or less, of certain real property generally located on Pine Lakes Parkway and being more particularly described in the exhibit A attached to the ordinance. The rezoning is from commercial to master planned development district, or MPD, zoning. It provides for conflicts, provides for severability, and provides for an effective date. Again, this is a second reading, so of a quasi-judicial matters of the maniacs party communication since the first reading, those should be disclosed at this time.
Any disclosures?
I've none.
None. Okay.
Mayor, city council, this is a very large piece of property, an infill site that's going from commercial to primarily residential, which staff really believes is a good thing. I just going to give you the details again. This is second reading, but it's a significant application as we think it's important to let the public know what is happening here.
This application is referred to as application 3420, the Whiteview Master Plan Development Proposal. In terms of the general location of this proposal, we're looking at western Palm Coast, north of Whiteview Parkway, east of US One, and west of Bel Air. As you can see in by zooming a bit closer, it's a large infill site. It's 116 acres that's completely surrounded by residential development, but for the two churches adjacent to the south of the property. And again, the boundaries are north of Whiteview Parkway, south of Pine Lakes Parkway, west of White Mill Drive, and east of Woodbury Lane. The proposed rezoning is from commercial to general commercial to master planned development. In terms of the future land use map, this property is designated as mixed use. The mixed use designation allows both commercial to general commercial and master planned development zoning. This is the existing zoning map. As you can see, it's red. It's a bit unusual in terms of it being completely surrounded by single-family residential, and the current designation is commercial two. Again, it's an infill site. The proposed standards for commercial two, the minimum lot size, the current standards, I'm sorry, for commercial two, the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet, the impervious coverage is 70 percent, the maximum building height is up to 100 feet, but we're recommending a condition as part of our approval now. The proposed zoning would be master planned development, and this is what the proposed zoning map would look like if this was approved. Because this is a master planned development, a master concept plan is included with the proposal. This is the proposed master concept plan. It includes 210 single-family residential units. The units adjacent to the water features will be the smaller lots, 45-foot minimum wide, and the larger lots are oriented toward the residential uses to the west. The proposed development includes a neighborhood park to the northeastern corner. That's also a wetland area and a well field area. And in the southeastern corner of the proposed concept plan is a multifamily site with the possibility of a small commercial node in the corner. There was a neighborhood information meeting regarding this proposed application. The meeting occurred July 16th at the Palm Coast Bible Church. Approximately 15 people attended that meeting. Staff is supporting the request as did the planning board because the proposed MTD development includes residential uses that are compatible with the surrounding area. The application will require subdivision review and technical site plan review, and because it's a master planned development, provision can be made for the 45-foot minimum lots in addition to the 50-foot wide minimum lots. The project is an infill proposal, so existing services and facilities are nearby. And because it's in a mixed used area on the future land use map, a variety of land uses are allowed and encouraged. And because it's a master planned development, there is a required minimum open space percentage as also this includes some environmental safeguards. The proposed development must comply with the city's land development code, comprehensive plan, and all other applicable permits and regulations if approved. Planning staff and the Planning Land Development Regulation Board recommend that the city council approve the rezoning of 116 acres from commercial to general commercial to master planned development as proposed in application number 3420. However, we're adding an additional condition based on discussion from the first city council public hearing. We're recommending that the master planned development agreement limit any commercial two zoning to a maximum height of 35 feet, and we're recommending that that provision be added to section 7.1A of the master planned development agreement where it speaks to zoning restrictions. That concludes my comments for the time being.
Council, any questions or comments at this time? Open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number six, please do so at this time.
Let's continue about our section. Question I have is you're spending $2 million to redesign Whiteview Parkway in the next few months or within a year, whatever it is, because of fatality accidents, et cetera. Yet at the same time, you're going to add probably 400 cars, 300 to 400 cars into that Parkway to get to US One or wherever. So the entrance and egress into that section, I looked on the map and it shows one exit, looks like it's going to go into Whiteview, yet that exit wasn't shown on the $2 million project. So are we going to tear up a $2 million project to add another lane? Or are we going to incorporate all this into the Whiteview project, which would make sense? You're adding 200-plus vehicles a day into that area. Please be aware of what's going to happen. You're going to have to make it four lanes again, Whiteview Parkway down the road. So please look at it more realistically because you're spending $2 million on Whiteview Parkway expansion, and at the same time, you're adding construction to add more vehicles onto that area where you're trying to make it, it doesn't make sense. You should combine it, we look at it and make it more reasonable because that $2 million to go and expand Whiteview Parkway, and at the same time, you're going to, then after it's done, add 200 vehicles a day, minimum, maybe 300 a day, onto Whiteview and its area. So something just doesn't seem with common sense. It should be looked at more, the Whiteview redone, because you're adding up to 400 vehicles a day down to that area, and you're going to have only two lanes, one each way now? I mean, we've had a lot of discussion on Whiteview. You're in the middle of a half a million dollar study, pre-construction study, then another one and a half million dollars in construction. And what happens? You're going to tear it all up because there are new developments being made. So this doesn't make sense.
Thank you for comments. Next speaker.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. Now, when all this traffic is added to Whiteview, one of the staff reports is item D where it says it won't become a hazard or a nuisance or even a health hazard. Okay? Once all this traffic's added, and it does maybe become a nuisance, maybe it becomes a hazard, or maybe it becomes a health hazard to the people, what recourse are the people going to have when the staff study says that it wouldn't? Just a question.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. If none, I'll close public comments. Mr. Lanham, if you can respond to the Whiteview discussion, please.
Well, this property was taken in consideration when we looked at Whiteview and possible ways to improve the safety down the full length of Whiteview. There's very little connection. In fact, most of the residential will go out to White Mill and Pine Lakes. But our engineers are taking this in consideration. I think it's just a good argument as to why it is important that we do the safety improvements along Whiteview and that the two lanes, it's not just two lanes, it's really creating turn lanes that are a lot safer and intersections that are a lot safer than what we currently have. So I don't think Whiteview is an issue whatsoever as far as this application is concerned.
Mayor, council, I would also bring to the councils and the public's attention that this is a master planned development, therefore has an agreement that's attached to the ordinance. It's referenced, it's part of the agenda packet, and specifically at page 16 of 36 on section 10.4, it recognizes that the property's current zoning is COM one, which would generate pursuant to traffic studies, 4,570 PM peak trip, hour trips, and that the proposed rezoning, which is for your consideration today, will reduce the traffic on the city's roadway system to generate only 625 similar trips, which is a reduction of 3,045, 3,045 trips.
And thank you for your comments, Mr. Carr, as well, about the traffic discussion. Okay, council, any other questions or comments? If not, entertain a motion.
I'm only going to say that I have a conflict, voting conflict on this matter. Move approval, second.
Moved in second at all. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number seven is an ordinance. Mr. Reichman.
Mayor, council, this is the first reading of an ordinance of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending the Unified Land Development Code, section 4.09, drive-through facilities by relocating it to chapter five, transportation, connectivity, access, and parking. Amending chapter five, transportation, connectivity, access, and parking, and amending section 14.02 glossary to clarify intent and to reflect current development trends. This provides for severability, codification for conflicts, and provides for an effective date.
Mayor, city council, this is the first reading of this proposed ordinance. Periodically, we take a look at our land development code to try to make sure that it is up to date with state laws and standards for land use. And so this is one of many of those examples. Bill is going to lead you through the presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, council members, mayor, and members of the public. This is a rewrite of chapter five. It was adopted along with the balance of our land development code in August 2008, and it relates to transportation, connectivity between projects, pedestrian and vehicle access, parking, loading, and stacking. It was amended twice in December 2009 and again in May 2012. It's one in a series of the land development code chapters that staff is reviewing and We based our updates based on issues and concerns that have arisen in Palm Coast regarding transportation and parking over the last eight to 10 years. We also reviewed parking, loading, and stacking standards of about a dozen other coastal communities in Florida that are similar in nature to Palm Coast. We also reviewed and analyzed parking demand studies in the Institute of Traffic Engineers' Parking Generation. After completing a draft, the, internally, then we took it to Fcard, Florida Council of Responsible Development, Flagler County area of responsible developers. Met with them five times, we went through it on a line-by-line basis. Following it, went to the planning board, and then we had a public hearing at the planning board on April 18th. There's five key changes in chapter five over the current chapter five. We updated driveway standards for single-family homes. We reviewed and updated parking standards for basically all of the land uses in Palm Coast. We reviewed and updated the requirements for truck loading spaces and also updated the standards for stacking standards for drive-through lanes. In addition, we analyzed a potential change in garage standards for duplexes. On driveway standards, the key thing we looked at, we get a lot of people come in and they've got teenage drivers, or they may have people visiting from up north, and since you can't park on the street, they come in and say, you know, hey, we can get two or four vehicles in the driveway, but we need more than that. So the things we've added is allowing additional widths for the driveway, which can mean adding an extra flare, so you have an extra lane to park with. A turnaround, in case you're on a, like a curved road, so if it's a little difficult to back out, you can now use the turnaround and drive out of your driveway. Additionally, we showed more circular driveway options, and I think you could see here, if you look to scale here, you could probably fit 10 vehicles in this driveway without getting out into the right of way. On parking standards, right now, we have a minimum parking standard, and we also have a maximum parking standard that's 10% above the minimum. And over the last four years, due to changes in market standards, if the minimum or the maximum does not work for a developer, then they can come in for a parking flexibility study, which is analyzed by staff to determine if a different standard is used. And over the last four years, we've had a lot of those happen. One of the things we did, we increased parking flexibility. A civic association such as the Elks Club could provide up to one-third of their parking as grass parking spaces with a paved drive aisle. Additionally, you can put all of your excess parking in as stabilized grass spaces, and this would be intended for parking that is only periodically used. On truck loading standards, we dropped the requirement for smaller retail and restaurant uses under 5,000 square feet to have a loading space. Additionally, we added some flexibility where they can request an alternative loading analysis based on a operational standard in their site plan. One of the things we made a little more specific and tightened up, if you have a retail store or an industrial building of over 50,000 square feet, currently, you just put in a loading space that could be more like the size of a Pepsi truck, let's say. And what we're proposing is that this would go to be enlarged, so it's a full-size loading space of 12 by 55. Additionally, we added some stacking standards for two uses that aren't there right now. One is car washes, and the other one is residential entry gates. In this picture, it's, this is actually island walk off of, I'm sorry, canopy walk off of Palm Coast Parkway. And even though there wasn't a standard, that's a very high-quality project. So they went ahead and put a stacking standards in behind the gate anyway. We've added another requirement that applicants must provide via a traffic impact study that adequate stacking will be provided onsite during AM, PM, and midday peak hours. And this is where trying to address an issue where we have some restaurants that are extremely successful, and so successful that in the morning, they, cars tend to park off, they're stacked. stacked up off-site and out into perhaps a local street, and hopefully not out onto a collector or arterial street. The Flagler Home Builders Association through F Card wanted one change here, and right now, there's a threshold for a duplex that if it's under twelve hundred square feet, the builder or developer has the option of just having a one-car garage. And the Home Builders Association would like that increased to thirteen hundred square feet being the threshold. So once you hit thirteen hundred square feet, you would be required to have a two-car garage with a two-lane driveway approaching the garage. The city's IT department did do an analysis of duplex lots per the mayor's request and found a total of just over five thousand duplex lots with about twenty-two hundred of those, or forty-four percent, still being vacant. Planning staff met with the Flagler Home Builders Association representatives last Friday, and we discussed city council's concerns with both the number of garages required for duplexes as well as the parking required for duplexes.